All right, it is 6:30. We'll call this meeting to order.
Counselor member Backus? Counselor member Bain?
Here.
Counselor member Husnick?
Here.
Counselor member Egner?
Here.
Mayor Winnick?
Here. I ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the reason just as strong.
And we'll move into the open forum. Is there anybody signed up tonight? Thank you. Gary Brink?
Here.
Please come on up to the podium and state your name and address.
Yes, my name's Gary Brink, 1706 11th Avenue Southeast here in Forest Lake on Second Lake Channel. And my issue today is having a marina in the channel. There's a neighbor nearby that has access to boats and it's foot traffic and automobile traffic problem that I've seen anyway. And I'm just wondering if there is anything that can be done, if we're all allowed to do that, it would, you know...
Is this like a private marina?
It's residential. The whole Second Lake Channel is all residential.
Right.
And they have about five boats during the summertime that they rent out all summer long, and they've been doing it for a number of years. And there's a traffic issue and foot traffic, and it's kind of a problem.
Sure. I think we'll refer you to Donovan or...
I've been speaking to Donovan over the past few months, and I had Jamie come by and take a look at it at one point, too. And he suggested I come up to council and...
Well, yeah, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Bring it up and something to talk about.
I'm not really sure if there's any local statutes on renting or not renting equipment.
The DNR has a thing in the paper about having a marina, and they have no boats of their own. And I know they rent out all their entire lake shore.
Okay, so people are actually storing their private boats there?
Yeah, just for the summertime, yeah.
All right. Well, I guess we'll have Donovan get a little bit more background information for the council.
Okay.
And we can go forward from there, so...
Yep.
I'll keep you in the loop as well. Maybe, does Donovan have your phone number as well?
He does, yes.
All right, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak at the open forum? All right, let's move on to the 2019 fee schedule. Dan, did you want to take us through that, or Bailey, or...
I can tee it up. What you have before you is the recommended 2019 fee schedule based on some of the meetings that we held over the course of 19 as part of the work that was done to eliminate some of the, like the dog license requirement and some of the other business licenses. We took back some requests of some other parts of the fee schedule that the council had expressed interest in either clarifying or combining some fee items. And what you see here is basically department heads did go back through and did review those current fees and basically did that consolidation work. Any work that was done or any fee that was changed on the fee schedule, we did outline in red, so it's easy for council to see where those changes are. Also, in that memo is basically a summary sheet of the changes to the fee schedule. I tried just to kind of summarize those down into one document as best as I could to kind of show some of where those changes were, why they were there, why those changes were made. I guess we're looking, what staff is looking for at this point is just feedback on that 2019 proposed fee schedule to see if there is any fees that you wish to either adjust or have further discussion on. Moving forward, it's advisable to get the fee schedule adopted in 18 for 19, which would mean that we would have to get it published for the ordinance, for the 10-day notification by the end of November. So we would need to get this in a spot where we could get it published for notification by the end of November so we could get it considered at the December 10 meeting for inclusion for 19. At that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, or department heads are here as well to talk about anything specific in their departments.
Any discussions, any questions from the council?
The packet that I'm seeing online, it looks like the water rate study was inserted, and did it override? Previously, when I looked at the packet, there was a redlined version, and we're not seeing it right now.
I don't see it apparently, but when I looked at it earlier last week, everything looked in accordance with what we had all discussed.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see that in here either, but...
I amended the agenda today to include the water rate study. Something might have kicked it out. I can double check, though.
Is it possible for us to get that printed out in front of us and then circle back later in the meeting?
I'll get it.
I think it'd be helpful to just have the redlined version in front of us.
I will print copies right now and get that back. It was up to you.
Perfect.
All right, any other... I mean, I'm fine with all the fees. I like the simplification. I like the reduction of certain fees that just were too high for like the desirable rental, I think, as residents, basically, that are looking to rent it anyway. One question, and it's really not as much a fee, but building permits and potential for expedited building permits, whether it's an additional charge or a partial permit for people to get started. I mean, you know, footing and foundation review, so leasing can get going. Certain times of the year, obviously, it's more imperative than others. So that would be the only thing I'd like to throw out there is, what can we do within that building department to be able to address, you know, every one of those needs fairly, but also, you know, there are certain ones that need to be expedited. And I am looking for suggestions on how to do that, but, you know, especially when you come to, you know, commercial work, things like that, where they want to get started. And I know there's a long process for reviewing the entire plan, but still, you know, we should be able to give them a green light to start digging or, you know, doing whatever, and give them a week or two for us to get the rest of that done, so.
We can bring that back at the next council meeting for recommendations, but I can tell you that we are working to get that plan review time down to a two-week period as a standard instead of being the exception that it has been throughout the summer.
That would be great.
Yeah, I know that this has been worked on, and I really appreciate it because you and I had a conversation about that a few weeks ago, and I appreciate your hard work, and I know it has improved. There's no question about it. And two weeks to me seems pretty darn reasonable for most, you know? And, you know, I understand the footing plans and all that kind of stuff, but there's so many other things that go with that that can get interconnected, and you could really get into a lot of trouble if you tried to separate it, you know? So I don't know, whatever you can do, come up with, as far as I'm concerned. But all I just wanted to say, thanks for your, at least, addressing that issue and moving ahead with it, Al. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to add is, in the recent planning commissions, it's come up with the controversy over the driveway, not a driveway, is it a driveway? My understanding is currently we do not charge a fee and we do not even require a permit. So is that not something we should consider putting in this before we publish these?
We're already looking into that. We don't have an answer yet, but we've started to see what we can do for a driveway permit so that type of incident doesn't happen again.
The question I have is, can that be added at a later date after you publish these?
Oh, yeah, I think you can, yes. You can add it at any time, you just have to amend it.
And amend the fee schedule at that point.
Yeah, I think most of the time driveways and sidewalks and things are included on the site plan, especially these lots where you're getting close to the impervious area. And so if they're written on that site plan and everybody follows that site plan, it shouldn't be that big of an issue, but occasionally it does happen.
I had that conversation with Donovan on two different occasions when we were looking at the comprehensive right-of-way permit, and he was under the impression that a driveway permit would be encompassed underneath the minor excavation. However, I don't think it's very clear.
Yeah, no, I think the driveway permit has to be called out separately so that the driveway is poured correctly and it's poured in the right, especially with driveways that are in the right-of-way. It's in our best interest to make sure that we meet the standards so that they can last and they're not poured incorrectly in the right-of-way, they don't affect drainage or anything like that. So we will be working to institute a driveway permit so that Public Works will be the authority to review the driveway when it's poured.
Good. The only thing I would like to add, and I agree with what Mr. Casey just said, that when people hear there's no permit required, there's no fee required, in their mind, I can do it my way. And I'm sure that's not what the city wants or other property owners adjacent to them might want.
All right. Ryan? One thing I just want to bring up that I know we previously talked about, but I don't see anything implemented with it in the fee schedule on, you know, on Exhibits B where we have the fees for development projects. And as our responsibility has gone up for MS4 requirements, stormwater, pond maintenance, infrastructure related to our drainage, that we still don't incorporate anything related to fees such as trunk water area charges, stormwater charges that other communities have around us, including Hugo, such as, you know, when the development comes in, they pay an area charge or a connection fee to the storm sewer, like they just do with the water in the sewer. And we got some heads that were nodding yes when we talked about it, but that's kind of, we just briefly talked about it at one workshop. So if that's something you want me to pursue and pull information together, too, that's about around with existing communities, what that fee is used for and what that pricing was, I think that would be something you should at least review if we're not ready to implement it now. But obviously, our maintenance and responsibilities with our drainage systems are increasing, so it's something that we probably should look at.
I thought there was, I was under the understanding, anyway, that there was some legal challenges to the legitimacy of those types of fees.
That was related to the transportation area charges. Where I don't think, there's not a community in the metro that doesn't charge sewer and water fees, and probably 70% of them now are charging stormwater fees.
I think it's a responsible thing to do to move towards that direction, certainly.
You know, I personally don't want to charge people that want to move here any more than is necessary. Instead of just charging a fee, I'd like to, and I think you should, I would like to see research on it, but I'd like to have those, if we're going to do it, I want them dedicated to a specific purpose and a benefit to those people that are moving into those properties. Otherwise, we're just to disappear down the black hole and have them throw thousands of dollars for the privilege of moving here and paying property taxes. I don't see a benefit to anybody for that.
Brian, are you referring to some of the whack-and-sack fees for a developer coming in just for developments?
So typically, what you see is either a stormwater connection fee by the unit, how many connections did you make? Or in a subdivision-type situation, it's a trunk stormwater acreage charge, so much dollar per acre. So that'd be pretty easy to, you know, kind of work backwards. You know where all that drainage of that development's going, to the ponds that were constructed, part of the plot approval. Once the plot's approved, infrastructure's done, you know, it becomes public infrastructure, so you can keep that money tied to that plot and use that for future maintenance, whether it's even just clean out the beaver dams that are from A to B, right? Instead of... Go ahead.
I was just going to go ahead with what you just said, that if you could dedicate the monies to pond cleanout or trench cleanout, but it has to go to that.
Especially if it can be tied to, you know...
Yeah, as long as it's, I think it has to be a little more general because there's, you know, way too much...
It could be like the headwaters areas. We all know that goes to JD4, right?
Right.
So that's a pretty simple quadrant in town, where everything, you know, back to where Cornerstone Plaza makes its way to Clear Lake eventually. You know, so that could be another area, right? Pretty simple area, you can make a map tie it to, you know, and move forward that way, too, so.
Well, let's take a, you know, let's have you do some research on, you know, surrounding communities and, you know, see where they're at. We also keep in mind the Watershed District and what they're charging for fees as well. I think they're all getting way too excessive anyway, but as long as the money is going for a purpose that it's intended for.
I would rather see the connection fees come out of the development end of things to maintain the storm infrastructure put into it than coming out of, you know, taxpayer base to correct these down the road.
Otherwise, we're struggling on maintenance at the, just like we are with ponds today, and how are we going to correct?
So thank you for bringing that up, Ryan.
What else are we forgetting?
It's crazy what you see in other cities' fee schedules compared to what we don't have. Just, that's plain and simple. You guys have very simple, very few items, and yet you go anywhere around the metro, doesn't have to be the inner metro, down to Prior Lake, over to Chaska, Chan Hassen, to Oconia, to Coon Rapids, to Shisago City, to North Branch. They have way more line, fee line items than you guys have.
Yeah, but bottom line, are, you know, are they charging a lot more or is there, are they making it up for something else as well? I personally think that, you know, we're in line. I think the biggest thing we're lacking on really is the ability to, you know, build out some roads and water and sewer infrastructure before development comes. And I think that's just been, you know, lack of seeing where that development's going to come. I mean, it was a lot of slow years for a while with a lot of lots sitting around here, but now that those are used up, I think it really needs to start, we need to start putting that water and sewer in, getting those roads ready to go for future development.
I just will make one comment, and I know we'll talk about it more later, so we'll go into more detail then. I just did a survey of 25 communities on the outside of the 694, 494 metro, all the way around the metro. 25 I surveyed, just our WAC charge, we're at 1,800. The highest was 9,000, and the lowest was just over 1,100, but they don't have treated water. So when you, when you look at all the apples-to-apples, yes, that's just simply the WAC charge, but then they also have their area charges, and then they have, some even had other separate charges and lateral charges. They're way ahead of us. And that's how, when you look at some of these communities, Dayton, Maple Grove, Lake Elmo, Victoria, Chaska, Medina, Minatrista, Oconia, just go look at all their roadways that are all built out, because that's how they funded that, through the development projects. So stuff's just queued up, development after development, that's, we're looking in the mirror, wondering how we're going to get that next 500 feet of road extended.
So can you kind of put together a summary, like, you know, here's how much development fees per, you know, 30-acre lot or half-acre lot in a few different cities, comparable cities? I mean, Oconia, Minatrista, I don't see those as, quite as comparable as, you know, maybe Farmington or, you know, Hugo, you know, places like that anyway, so.
Who's on, you mentioned what, we're at 1,800. Who was on the low end?
Corcoran was at just over 1,100, but Maple Grove treats their water. Ramsey doesn't have treatment, they're at 1,300. Osigo was at 1,700, and not familiar with that area. And then we were 1,800, then Montamita was 1,900. Then it went from Dayton, Maple Grove, Shisago, Rosemont, Hugo, St. Michael, then all the up into the 4,000s. Then eventually, at the end, the highest one I found was Prior Lake at 9,000. That's just for WAC.
Where was Rosemont? Because I think of Rosemont kind of...
Rosemont's 2,400, and then right now, they don't have treatment. So they are on the verge of finally going to get their first treatment plants, but... So some of those other cities, too, have interconnects in between each other and different ways they distribute water, especially within the, in the loop, 494, 694 loop, that's more common. And they're built out, too, right? So there's all kinds of things to compare when you're comparing stuff, and you can put it in a spreadsheet, too, but it is pretty complicated stuff. And at the end, you know, comparing apples to apples, I know we're fairly low compared to everybody around us.
All right.
But certainly put it on the chart, no problem.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan? Any other questions on the fee schedule? All right, let's move on. The water rate study draft results.
Well, Mary, if I just remember, too, in 10 minutes, we have that special meeting that we have to call, too, so just, just make sure everybody's aware of that.
Yeah, we'll have to interrupt.
Yeah, have to interrupt.
Thank you.
I'm Jeanne McGann with AEM Financial Solutions, and I wanted to share with you tonight the results of the water rate study. As we went through the water rate study, we have worked with, you know, city staff on, you know, various assumptions within the capital improvement program, and then pulling that information together into a cash flow, looking at all the different types of customers that the city does serve. So tonight, what we do have is several different scenarios that we wanted to share with you. And, but first, I thought I would go over, you know, the assumptions that are placed within the water rate study. With the four different scenarios that we have to share with you tonight, scenario one is really just looking at the 3% inflationary factor. And then scenario two is, you know, looking at basing the billings with different percentage increases throughout the years. Scenario three is based on an 8% increase, and scenario four is based on a 10% increase. The reason that we did these different scenarios is to really to show the impact to the residential customer and also to show where the targeted cash flow would land at the end of the analysis in 2028. As we go through the assumptions, the operational expenditures are indicated at 3%, and that's throughout all four scenarios. In addition to that, we anticipate an average of an additional 101 users each year from 2019 through 2028. All of the planned acquisition of the capital assets is based on the city's capital improvement program, with all the major purchases offset with bond proceeds. And then, of course, we projected the future debt payments associated with those bond proceeds into each one of the analysis. Some of the projects that are listed here, we did work with city staff as we were going through these assumptions, because as we were looking at some of the planned capital expenditures, I'll give you an example with the new water treatment plant. Originally, it was projected to have bonding all within one year. And if you looked at the overall impact and the rate increases that would be necessary to substantiate that, we determined that it would be better to do two separate bond issues in order to reduce the overall impact. In addition to that, one of the things we took a look at is the fact that the meters will be, are scheduled to be replaced. And with that, we did project a meter fee in order to assist in paying for the replacement of that. So essentially, it's almost like a rental charge in order to have a meter so that they are able to be replaced in a timely fashion. Within scenario one that's up on your screen right now, this is the projection that just looked at, an inflationary increase of 3%. With that, the overall impact on an annual basis in 2019 for a user that uses 11,000 gallons...
Oh, you got it. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry. For a user that uses 11,000 gallons, the overall impact for a year was $5.22 in 2019. Now, scenario one is going to be very difficult to be able to do something as low as that based on some projections that I'll show you here in just a few minutes. Scenario two is based on a 12% increase and also adding a meter fee. Like I said, that meter fee will assist in paying for, you know, the replacement of meters. So the total impact for an 11,000-gallon user in this scenario would be $29.70 for the Scenario three projects an 8% increase, and with that same 11,000-gallon user, the impact in 2019 would be $22.73. And here again, we have projected the meter fee. Scenario four projects an increase of 10%, and the overall increase a resident would see with 11,000 gallons for 2019 would be $26.22. Now, with all of that said, though, I'm going to skip a couple pages here and go on to page 10, where we have a graph that shows where debt service falls, where's your operating expenses, and where your revenue from operations are. Now, with only a 3% inflationary increase, your revenues from operations will not cover the operational expenses as well as the principal and interest payments on debt. If you look at scenario two, scenario two, that is where we added the meter fee, and as you'll see, the green line, the revenue from operations does increase. Now, what this does not take into consideration at this point is where your cash flow is at and where your cash reserve should be at. Cash reserves, as a general rule, you should have 100% of next year's principal and interest payments for your debt, as well as 50% of your operating expenses. All of that should be maintained within your cash reserves. So I'll show you where scenario three and four do fall. And if you just look at your operating expense compared to revenue, along with your debt service, principal, and interest, scenarios two, three, as well as four, all look relatively good. Now, as we go on to the next page, this will really show you where your targeted cash reserve is, and that would be with just a 3%. You can see that we have a negative position. Your targeted cash reserve is in the red, and the cash balance is in the hole, basically. If you move on to scenario two, by the year 2028, your targeted cash reserve will be in the correct position to be able to substantiate you in the future based on the infrastructure improvements that are projected at this time. If you go with scenario three with the 8% increase, once again, your targeted cash reserves are much less than needed in order to maintain, you know, what we're recommending for a cash reserve. And on scenario four with a 10% increase, once again, the targeted cash reserve is not adequate to substantiate the future infrastructure improvements. One of the areas that will be very telling for you, if you go into your supplementary data, as opposed to graphics, we've represented this with some numbers for you. And the best place to look is down where you have cash and cash equivalents at December 31st, which is in bold. And for 2019, we have $1,682,000 if I round it off, and your targeted cash reserve is at a little over $2 million. So as you go through these different scenarios in the supplemental information, you'll be able to see, on scenario two, if you look at this, and you have to look clear out to the year 2029, you'll see that at that point, we have, the targeted cash reserves will be adequate for where you need to be at. And by the way, I do have hard copies of this presentation. This is really difficult to follow. So one second here. If you turn back to the supplemental information, which is on about page 16, this is where you're going to be able to really be able to see exactly where your targeted cash reserve is compared to your cash on hand. And I can certainly... And I can certainly start on scenario one. So if you look at scenario one, you have the 2.1 million for your targeted cash reserve at the end of 18, or your cash at 2.1, and then your targeted cash reserve at 1.6. So at the end of 18, it's projected to have excess cash reserves of 470,000. However, as you move forward into future years, based on the infrastructure improvements, the building of the facility for the, you know, water treatment plant, and all the other improvements that are being projected, your targeted cash reserve is not adequate. On scenario two, if you go on to the next page, you'll note that at the end of 2019, we anticipate about $1.5 million in cash with your targeted cash reserve at 2 million. If you follow the spreadsheet over to the far right, and at the end of 2027, you'll have cash of about 1.9 million, targeted reserve at 2.3 million. However, the following year, you end up with cash a little over 3 million. And at that point, since we don't have any projections for infrastructure improvements past that date, then we do anticipate that you would have adequate reserves.
We're going to have to interrupt for a minute. We have a special meeting right at seven.
Okay.
That we need to start. So we're going to have to step away from this for a minute and then call you back in a little bit.
We were looking at scenario two for the cash flow projections on about page 17 of the report in front of you. And when you look at scenario two, it is anticipated that you would see a 12% increase each year for 2019, 20, and 21, with a 10% increase thereafter for the remaining years through 2028. Now, if you look at where, what type of impact does that have to a resident that does have that same 11,000 gallons of water usage? If you look at the second to the bottom line, it does indicate each and every year what the annual increase would be. So on average, they're going to see about, you know, anywhere from 29 to, you know, $45 per year for an increase. One of the things I did want to point out, as earlier this evening, you were talking about WACs and SACS and other connection fees. The projections that we currently have within each one of these scenarios does identify the WAC revenue. And if you go up to the top of this page that we're looking at right now, under your cash flows from operating activities, you'll see where the WAC revenue is at. Now, the water area connection charges are calculated at the $1,800 as they currently stand right now. There is a potential where that WAC fee could be increased. It will require some additional analysis. However, we need to look at how the future infrastructure improvements do correlate to that WAC fee. So that is, you know, definitely something, you know, up for consideration if indeed you do choose to, you know, like us to go further with that analysis.
Yeah, I do have a question under what WAC revenues. I mean, it's 181,000, 181,000. From 2019 till 2028, that number remains the same.
Right. Those are based on just projections for the additional connection charges that they were anticipating, and it was forecasted out at an even amount each year.
So you're assuming that our community will grow at the same rate every year?
Based on the conversations that we had with staff, we had to assume, you know, something to say that it's going to grow, you know, by 100 this year and 150 next year. It's really difficult to know exactly what, you know, developments will occur in which, you know, you'd have to charge the WAC fee. So we have to come up with some type of a projection that is realistic as far as what would be there.
Zero does not, zero increase does not seem realistic to me.
Let me, let me clarify that, that if you recall, the WAC fee is at $1,800. This scenario does not take under consideration any increase in that fee at all and anticipates a level of development over the years that are stated in the financial scenario.
That's what I'm saying. To me, it looks like you're saying every year that we're going to have the same level of development.
That's, that's, as was stated, yes, the, there has to be some kind of an assumption of either growth or no growth and taking a kind of a mid-course and saying it's 250 or 50, you know, we had to choose an area where we think it's comfortable enough that if it doesn't, we're not too far off on the WAC, on those fees. So one thing about the WAC fee, if we do talk about that increasing, that will, could shift some of these scenarios off of the annual rate payer to the developer who is paying these fees.
Well, that's what I was leading up to, because if you keep that number static, then the only place to get revenue is increasing fees from existing customers.
Correct. And that's why we'd be, I'm sorry.
I don't, well, at least I hope not, that we're not going to be stagnant for 10 years.
Yeah, we would like you to look at that a bit.
So could just, Councilmember Wagner, just break that down kind of into housing starts? If you had 181,000 coming in annually for cash and only residential development, that means you would be building 100 homes a year.
But I think last year, we built like 250? I think that was the number for residences?
Yeah, we, you know.
But I got to assume that we will have some commercial development.
Commercial industrial, yeah.
And this does not make that assumption.
Economy cyclical, too.
It's not static, no.
And I could provide just a little more insight into that, that number. So we look back, I believe it was Washington County put out a study that says, what's the projected total number of households that are going to come online in Forest Lake between now and I believe it was the next 10 years? I believe that number was right around 1,0100 or so. I sent that down to EM, and I said, here's a number, it's about 1,000 households are going to come online. I said, but also be cognizant of the fact that not every resident that comes into Forest Lake will hook into our cities, so we have a lot of wells, we have a lot of stuff, there are a lot of people who aren't going to be requiring resources. So it appears they took that 1,100 or 1,000 homes and divided it over 10 years, so that's where you get that even, that even growth number. And 1,000 could come in spurts, like you said, it could come in 251, year five the next, but, you know, this evens it out.
Does scenario two here include the meter fee as well?
Yes, scenario two does include the meter fee.
So, you know, for me, 12% is excessive without, you know, looking at ways to, you know, operate more efficiently. But as I'm looking at, you know, cost of employees, you know, where this year, we're at 340,000. By, you know, 2028, we're at, I don't know, what is it here? I just lost that line anyway.
Payments to employees.
Payments to employees, yeah. Which is, that goes to $700,000. So we're doubling the amount of staff, and we're not even close to doubling the amount of capacity in the water system. And if we are increasing, we should also be increasing the efficiency. So, you know, I'm looking at, you know, numbers like that and wondering, you know, how do you come up with that type of number there?
With the various operating expenses, they were inflated at the 3% per year.
Well, in 2020, we're at 375,000, and in 2021, you're at 498,000. That's not 3%.
There may have been an addition of staff. I'll have to look at the detail on that, and I can confirm that.
What you're projecting in there is that's when that third water plant will open up, and you're projecting that you'll, you know, right now, we're staff for two full-time employees from water that all of a sudden, you're going to have a third plant, and you're going to have to operate with more infrastructure added on a tower. So it's just plugged in there.
Okay.
When was the last rate study down here?
I'm not sure when the last rate study, but we've been at least holding a 3% for, since 2014. So we haven't been taking into consideration any growth or any major maintenance that needs to be done, or any new treatment plants. And one thing is, when you talk, earlier, we talked about economic development and trying to extend this stuff. If you want economic development to continue, we have to start to look at the water infrastructure, because if the water infrastructure doesn't grow or it fails, which it could if some of the capital improvements that we've talked about or listed, we'll have issues, probably more expensive issues as well.
Housekeeping.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Ryan. I'll just provide a little background on you so you can kind of understand how the city grew, grew and kind of where we're at. So we started off with our first well and treatment plants up where the, by the old city hall site. And then in 1996, the city added another treatment plant and well, which is down by the high school there, right there by Goodview. And then in 1999, we did the expansion to the existing one to add another treatment plant and another well up at, by the old city hall site, too. Our first water tower, obviously, that's not in commission, is over there off of Forest Streets. The city did build the South Water Tower in 2000, and then we built the North Water Tower in 2008, but then, you know, your fourth tower went offline, right? So you just think of really all the infrastructure that's been built after 1999, which was your last real capacity added to the system, and put it in perspective of what we're trying to serve today with the same system. But yet, knowing the projects that we have coming online or have just come online here recently, Headwaters Place, Headwaters Landing, another 72 apartments, Timber Ridge Apartments, somewhere around 70s, Lighthouse Lofts, 91 units plus restaurant, all the Headwaters developments, basically everything south of 200, 200 Streets or Fenway Athletic Fields and all the way over to 61 has come online after all this, all the big infrastructure development. Chestnut Creek, Phase One, Phase Two can't come online until they do some extra water work because they can't get the pressure over there. Lila Expansion, North Lakes Academy, BP Gas Station redevelopment, Cornerstone Plaza, Arbor Ridge Apartments, all the Broadway redevelopment, all the Gateway Green Development Area subdivisions, and the two apartment buildings that are being built right now. So that's all that's, the stuff been put on the system since 1999. And, you know, 12 million of what's in the CIP right now has been trying to been talked about the last five years. And we didn't want to have that difficult conversation, and I know nobody wants to pay higher rates, but we also don't want to be making headlines that other communities have when they've had water issues, or do we need to halt any development? You know, that's really where it's coming down to, when we had to do a water main tie-in for the Lighthouse Lofts because infrastructure was so old up there. Timing was critical and everything, and we were so lucky, the rain events that we did get, because the amount of hours our pumps were running that day, I mean, Public Works was watching that stuff 24/7. Dave's, you know, worrying to me, I'm sending worried emails to Dan, and what do we got to do? Are we going to put the city on a water conservation emergency situation? Because that's how much, that's how close we were to not having capacity when we had to shut that, I don't remember what y'all had to shut down, but we were basically running one.
One and a third plants.
And cranking that open, how many hours a day were you running the pumps?
The wells didn't stop running for five days straight, around 24 hours a day or a week.
And ideally, you want your pumps to run how long per day?
16 at the most.
That's what we were going through at those times, then we were fortunate enough to get a lot of rain events where the irrigation wasn't spiking like it has traditionally in the past. And now that's where really we're at. Some of the big-ticket items on here are maintenance in Treatment Plant One and Three. Built those in 96 and 99 and haven't touched them since. So that's, you know, we're trying to be more vocal about this because we're honestly worried with some stuff, and we don't want to be dealing with a reactive situation when we have so many customers that rely on these services daily. Fire protection, just, you know, imagine what somebody's going to do some morning when the shower doesn't work, right? That's at least our worries. What if we have a fire that they have no pressure or supply to handle something far out in the edges of the fringes of the development where our pressures are already getting low?
Yeah. No, I think we all understand that, Ryan. I'm just, I'm looking at the amount of increase, and I just, I find it, and we got to find somewhere in between. When you look at, at the cash flow, and I appreciate your concern with having, you know, 1.5 or 0.5 reserve plus 100% every year, but really, if we're looking at investing, you know, 10, 12 million, I think it's, you know, the council's diligence, but I think those reserves can go down significantly rather than, you know, trying to keep that all the way up. Because in 10 years from now, you know, we're, your line, your projected line is way above, you know, where we need, 10 years from now, we're not going to be looking at spending another 15 or 20 million, you know, 10 years from now, we're probably looking at rehabbing something. But I would like to also look at, you know, more of, being able to track the depreciation in those and making sure that we have money projected so we don't have to keep bonding for everything. But I, I would be comfortable with either more of a scaled increase where, you know, it's a little bit higher increase to begin with here, and then we back it off, or, you know, somewhere in between 3% and 12%. Because to me, 12% is just too much for what we're going to be doing. I, I can see those reserves drop down because we're not, you know, we're going to be there with new equipment, so.
You know, reserve standards are something kind of, I think, should stay stagnant. When it comes to 12% increase, it gets to be a lot when you want to look at it in that aspect, but if you think about the function of city government, why are we here? We wouldn't have a city here if we didn't have water. But that really is the last thing that, that's ever going to be the city and the first thing.
Well, we have really good, really good quality water here in Forest Lake, too.
We do, but we got to have a steady supply.
Not Colgan water, but pretty good.
You got to have that steady supply, and we don't have other options to resource the water. Jason, a system that's inadequate is extremely taxing financially and on, on staff.
Yeah, well, I, I think we got an adequate system. But yeah, we have had a lot of growth. We should be looking at an interconnect with Hugo when we put a new tower in. Or those types of emergencies for that, that one week where, you know, things were running 24/7, that's not the norm. You know, nobody can predict every scenario, but I think city staff does a great job with it. I just, I think the numbers are, you know, 12% is, is too much. And it's not about skimping, it's about using the reserves we have properly and understanding that, you know, we may not have a year's worth of cash sitting there just for the heck of it, but, you know, we're using that, and it'll build itself back up in eight or 10 years. But that's what we have the reserves for.
How much discretion do we have in that reserve amount? I know there's a recommended, and then what is the statute?
Okay. When you're looking at reserves, one thing to remember is that for the bonds that are sold, there's typically a covenant in there that indicates that you need to have the next years of principal and interest in reserves in order to make the payment for that debt. In regard to the 50% of operational costs, excluding any of the principal debt service and interest, you do have, you have some latitude there as far as the level of reserves that you'd like to maintain. Now, since things, the invoices do go out on a quarterly basis, you could consider doing a 25% of the operating expenses outside of the principal and interest. Best practice is really at the 50% level.
So one of the things that makes me also squirmy about this is, help me to understand, so because this is a water fund, we don't have an ability to supplement from a, from the general fund in an emergency situation? Or help, walk me through if the, if things went wrong and we're, you know, we've got this schedule, and all of a sudden, we're, we're in a situation because we don't have the right reserves. What are our options for Plan B or C?
Enterprise funds are intended to operate as a regular business, right? Just be substantiated on their own. Now, you do, of course, have a latitude if you needed to add additional tax levy or something of that nature for a water system. Of course, you can increase your property tax levy and do an allocation over to the water fund. Definitely not recommended.
I would agree, actually. You know, you can use your fund balance reserves in the general fund, depending what level they are, and what you're comfortable drawing those down to, to transfer them to the water fund. It's really not a good idea because basically, it's a one-time revenue to plug a one, a hole, and then you, you'll find the next year, you have to do that again.
Right.
So it's, it's really So it's, it's really a real, not a good move at all.
Yep.
We could, we could maybe borrow from the park fund to pay for some of that.
I mean, and we can go back and look at a different rate schedule if that's what you're going to direct us to do. I'd, I'd be lying to you if I told you it's going to be 3% because it's not going to be 3%.
Help me also to understand the, the, when we're talking in quantity and average, I think it's helpful to understand what is, what's your definition of average? Which means, you know, average quarterly bill at 11,000 gallons and average, you know, we're looking at an average dollar increase of between 29 and 43 dollars per year. What's, what does that mean for average household?
Okay.
What does that look like?
Well, you know, in the winter months, you're of course going to obviously use less water.
Yep.
And in the summer months, if people have irrigation and things of that nature, their gallon use is going to be substantially higher. And since you are on a consumption-based methodology, the more you use, the more you pay. Now, if you look at an average quarterly bill of 11,000 gallons, you know, you're probably looking at, you know, around, you know, three people in, in the house utilizing that water. But that would not be summer consumption.
Got it.
So now, currently, all the apartment buildings have just an individual meter on them, correct? Is that all?
Yeah, one meter coming in.
Yeah.
So, is there a way we can charge like a per-unit fee? Say 10 or 20 dollars a quarter, whatever, you know, just throwing a number out there, per dwelling? Whether it's a home or apartment? You know, if there's 40 units in that apartment, it'd be 40 times whatever, but something to kind of equalize it out. I mean, the push is for water conservation. It's, it's kind of that yin and yang. We want to sell more water to make more money, but I'd rather see water conservation. So, does that mean we have to rethink how we generate some of that revenue in there? And try to, try to divide that out a little more equally throughout all the users rather than?
I've been around this before, so having that meter fee is kind of essential to making sure that you're getting all your money out of all the water you've been pumping. Meters lose accuracy. So you go to the apartment meters, having, having the, having a newer and accurate meter in those apartments is what's going to be the most important thing for getting our revenue on.
Right, but I, I'm even saying that, you know, why shouldn't we be charging, you know, a dollar five or 100, whatever that dollar amount might be per residentially unit or equivalent? Not just a meter fee, but?
So we can, are we responsible for maintaining all the meters?
Yeah.
So if we're putting, I mean, you're going to, you're talking about.
Just like a franchise fee for cable television, but?
Molding fees may, being a higher access charge, it's something I could entertain.
No, I, I think it should be fair for everybody. You know, whether it's a resident or this, you know, rather than just a meter fee, there's a fee of X amount of dollars to provide that service, and then so much per gallon. You know, we're not, we may not be increasing it a lot right now, but we're redistributing how that gets charged, so it's charged more fairly for everybody and not just.
We're, we're supplying a product here where it's.
Right.
You're paid for what you use. I mean, we're supplying a product. So our, our best option to get our money's worth is do it as accurate as possible. I mean, your scales off essentially, as your cash, cash register, we're going to make sure scales or meters are as accurate as we can. That's why we're instituting that fee. And then we take a look at what does it cost? I mean, we, we, we can see what it costs to pump a gallon of water by looking at our budget. And as, as much as 12% looks ugly, that's the one thing we have to keep healthy in this city if we want a city. I mean, you want, you want upset residents, have them wake up with the water. It's one of the things that, somebody's going to look at their bill and going, oh, $7.42 a quarter more. But they'd be more unhappy to pay that, and they woke up one morning, their shower is off, or they're trying to get ready for the day.
I, I kind of fall into the camp of, two of the people at Rappers saying, we got a service that I'm being charged for that I don't receive. And there's so many people in our community that are in wells, but they might have city sewer. So they get a, there's a formula, you pay for half because you are using the city sewer, but you're not using the city water supply. And you're basically getting charged for that.
Do we have deduction meters in the system?
So, on our billing cycle, just so you know, in the summertime, we're stuck on three tiers. So the more water they use and they hit those thresholds, they pay a higher rate. I don't know if you knew that, but we do have that.
And your rate's different by meter size as well. So this, this is based on a three-quarter inch meter, so like an apartment building with a three-inch or a six-inch, it's a different rate as well.
Is this a sewer rate for somebody on a well, static?
Yeah.
Just an access rate, I believe, but, I mean, there's always the option, you, you could give them a meter for their well and base.
But what, right now, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is if you.
The sewer fund is a separate enterprise fund.
Yeah.
But the sewer fees are based on an average.
Of water usage.
Of, an average of community water or sewer usage.
So in this case scenario, we're seeing 1,100 gallons a year is average for a household. That means 1,100 gallons is going down, your, your sum is going down your sewer, and you get charged accordingly. Well, that may or may not be the case for the people at Wells.
Aren't they excluded from this, though? This is.
No, this has nothing to do with the sewer. This is just water.
This is just water?
Yep.
For those that have city water access.
Yeah, no, we, we're trying to determine water and trying to get to the point where we can, I mean, one of the capital improvement things, just to talk about meters and things, is, is a one-time shot to replace all the meters because we know we're losing money because the meters are going bad. We put new meters and get them all in, that'll help us. And just hire a company, put everybody's new meter in, get the readings, get them accurate, and we'll make probably a little more money as well. Probably not significantly to change these scenarios, but that's the importance of this capital improvement plan, is not only to improve the infrastructure, keep it up and running, but also to accurately reflect what the usages are.
I would say if you changed out the 3,000 remaining meters, you would see a significant dollar amount. Ask Becky, the, the one who takes utility bill calls, of all the meters that we're changing out.
But we talked, we talked about that almost a year ago, and we haven't seen anything come forward yet.
Well, and that's what this anticipates. We're asking for a meter increase so we can sell a bond to spend close to a million dollars to, to change out the water meter system.
You know, we were going to get a presentation on the radio or the antenna-based system and things like that, so.
Yep, that's what's plugged in to hear the, the $1 million with the AMI radios and finishing the rest. So we've been, the last two years, we've been putting about $125,000 into meters. So we went after all the apartments and commercial complexes first, where we're losing the most, and now we're getting in the residential. So basically, our 3,000 meters are all residential houses that are all about between 18 and 21, 22 years old.
Sam, any thoughts?
Well, my, my concern is the maintenance on these water treatment plants that has been left behind, and we got to pay for it somehow. And, and it's unfortunate, nobody likes an increase on anything, but we don't, we can't keep kicking this thing down the road. Now, it's, what I've been hearing is that these, the maintenance on some of these facilities is several years out or behind, and we certainly need to somehow take care of that.
Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but 20 years max life expectancy, you thought of major overhaul on a water treatment facility, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, you're, you're, I mean, how long you going to kick this down the road before you're looking at getting rid of it versus overhauling it?
Mm-hmm.
And that has its own basket of, of headaches with it.
But I mean, they do receive routine maintenance anyway. We're talking a total rehab on the facility now, aren't we?
Yeah, it's, they're, you're going to need it. It'd be nice if there was another way to bring, you know, it, it's, it's just, what are you selling? What's it bringing in? And is it going to make, make, is it going to line up at the end of the day with what you need? They really don't have another option for water.
Mm-hmm. So how much of a rate increase are you looking at? I mean, we got proposals for 1.5, you know, 3 to 12%.
Well, the no brainer is put in that meter fee. I mean, that, that's probably the most responsible thing you can do because aside from your water usage, it's maintaining your meters, which is your cash register. I mean, that's what, what's bringing you in, your bill is close to 100% of that water you're pumping. We hired a consulting firm, EAM, here to, to tell us what we need to, to do.
Yeah, I, I think you have to focus on either scenario number two or number four, minimal. Minimal 10% or 12, and then 10%. And then give us a direction to take both of those scenarios and talk about the WAC fees and how that's going to impact them, and what that might do to the residential or consumption rates. But, but, but we have to, and I just want to caution, we need to get this done before the end of the year. It's that important to do so that we can get going. I mean, this, this, these are big projects, important projects, and we need to get them done.
It also becomes part of the budget appro, I mean, this is part of the budget approval for that first meeting.
Absolutely.
Right.
I, I'll go with the recommendation of, of scenario number two. That's where I'm sitting.
So if you look at page nine. Scenario number two puts us basically at the top of the heap.
And you want to?
Yeah.
Yep. You want to look at that? That's kind of fluctuation, depending upon what's going on here. If you're looking at building a new tower or a new treatment facility, your rates are going to reflect that. You can look at the past trends, and I'm sure we're not going to be at the top of the scale here. You know, we haven't done a, done anything for a capacity since 99, correct, Ryan?
Well, even with scenario number one, we're pretty high.
What pages?
Same, page number nine. I'm not saying we don't have to do anything, and I'm probably the number one advocate for, you know, taking care of our basics, you know, water, sewer, and roads. That's what we're here for, without a doubt. I just want to make sure that we're, we're investing at the smartest way we can and not just, you know, a, a 12% a year increase for perpetuity just to me is not an acceptable increase. You know, bonding and, you know, going there, I'm just wondering, you know, where other options are, you know, and I, to me, yeah, we need an increase. I mean, there, there is going to be an increase, there's, there's no doubt about that, but, you know, there has to be a little more thought put into where that increase, you know, falls with, within the customers that are there.
I mean, so you, so you mentioned bringing up, I used to bring up bonding, and I don't like bonding either. However, if we're talking about something that's more of a pay-as-you-go scenario, then we're talking about even sky-high, you know, putting exponents on top of this of what it would take to be a self-funded program. I just, I think bonding is the first step and.
We have to bond, yeah.
Build into what a pay-as-you-go might look like in the future, but we're a long ways from that.
Yeah, you have to get to the point where your maintenance and everything is, you don't, you're not playing catch-up all the time. You have to get to the point where you just routinely can repair or update.
A little proactive.
You know, and more proactive. We're a long way from there.
There's no cheaper time to, to do those things in the present?
No, you should do them as soon as you possibly can because.
I guess.
The cost is only going to go up here.
Can you scroll to page 10?
If, if it's possible, Mayor and members of the council, Seth Peterson with Bolton and May, I just wanted to touch on the piece on the bottom of page nine, you're talking about that there, and.
We already covered that, I didn't want to hear about that right now.
Okay, that's fine.
So we go to page 10, scenario number two. You see that green line just goes way over the top once you get to 2028.
And what's to say we can't reevaluate down the road on it? I mean, if we get five years out, we could do the crazy thing government could ever do and lower your rates.
It'd never happen.
Never. You know, you go to scenario number four, and number three, even four. I mean, to me, three is a little bit more realistic. You know, a couple of years, we're falling behind, but then we're catching up again.
And if we're behind, I don't want to fall behind anymore.
That's what we have those reserves for. I mean, we're not falling behind in taking care of water, we're falling behind in our revenue. We're, we're losing money for a couple, three years before it brings it back up again.
It's a, it's a business model, it's an enterprise fund. I don't like the idea of losing money in this particular fund.
You, you do bring up an interesting point on, is there, is there an appetite to do a one-time, larger catch-up, have it hurt for 2019, whatever that number might be, you know, kind of preload it, which would allow us to offset future, I mean?
Absolutely, you can preload, just depends on what the appetite is for, how much it's going to hurt, and then what, what that does to years out. And then again, of course, going back and looking at the other fees, but, yeah, there's, there's, I mean, you can shape this any way as long as the, I mean, it's really matching the dollars to the bond to the, to the, to the year the expenses take place. So even if you front-load it to up, increase your fund balance immediately, and then ride, maybe ride out, you know, staying away from capitalizing interest or anything else that you do with bonds. But, yeah, you can do that, and we can look at different rates of scenarios to, to do that in the first year or two years. Often, some of those hits, and in my past, we front-loaded the first three years, and then it's gone back down to, you know, 10, 10, 10, and eight or seven or whatever, it just depends.
But doing something like that help us to move this green, so I'm pointing to scenario two that's up on the screen, to move that down closer to being so you don't have that significant, you know.
Yeah, even though the bond, and I agree that, I agree that the coverage rates here are important, but I, I don't, I don't, I mean, we can look at how comfortable we are with the risk to, to let those go with, with knowing that sometime in the future, if things don't quite work out that way, either one of two things probably will have to happen. One, that you'll have to increase rates again, or two, that you'll have to have an infusion of cash from, from the general fund probably in this, in this scenario. It just depends on your appetite.
And now, keep in mind, we just, you know, last year finished up sewer side of things, and this is the next thing that needs to be done. But keep in mind that we had to raise significantly sewer rates to pay for all the lift stations we just did, to try and get us caught up for the last 20 years before that.
Agreed.
On top of that, you know, Metropolitan Sewer Treatment Charges went up exponentially as well, 15% plus, I think they raised theirs. So, it's one thing on top of the other. It's not the $5 here, the $20 there, it's the $500 at the end of the year that is going to add up.
So that's kind of what I bring up, is there an opportunity to do, is it, is it better to have a conversation once and a catch-up in one year than to have a continued ongoing, what's just perceived to be higher than inflation rate increases for the next 15 years? Which can, you know, for council, five, six years from now, can be tough to, tough to.
And that's part of why I was kind of trying to propose, you know, is there a alternative revenue as well? You know, can we charge the lower volume users a little bit more to help offset that? Because, you know, our water usage, even as a community grows, hopefully won't grow as much. You know, hopefully people are conserving water more, they're not using it to sprinkle as much, things like that. You know, we just funded the schools, which was a great thing, to have water reuse. I mean, that's going to cut several million gallons of water sales to the school. And I think that was a very beneficial thing, but I'm just trying to figure out, you know, where we can go without just having 12% a year thrown on automatically, because to me, I think we can come up with a compromise. I, I don't know what that number is, but, you know, it's not cutting back on the projects, but we also have to look at how we can do things a little more efficiently.
Now, is this going to be that 12% on our flat rate plus the usage per gallon? So your access charge, your, your water hookup fee is going to go up 12%? Is that what this is including as well?
That's just the water itself, but.
This is just for the water. We have, the base fee is going up, and then we're adding the meter fee, and then the consumption rate goes up as well. But this has nothing to do with any of the, you know, water area connection charges. Those, at this point, are remaining stagnant.
I was referring to the base fee, I guess, if that's the language you're, you want to use. Is the base fee going to be going up with the usage fee? Is that factored into this? Or is that base fee going to go up one time and stay with the 12 staggered to 10?
Yeah, both the base fee and the consumption fee will increase.
Okay.
So the net result would be more than like a 12% increase if we went that route, correct? Because you're adding a meter fee as well, and the base fee would be going up?
As we went through this scenario, we were going through the overall impact to the resident based on that 11,000 gallons.
Okay, so it'd be 12% overall with the meter fee and everything?
Um, yeah, we can certainly double-check that calculation on the, let me see, when we look at this.
The meter fee is designed to sustain the meters alone, not necessarily go to other brands of it.
Because we took a look at what the cost for the new meters are, and that's how
Because we took a look at what the cost for the new meters are, and that's how the meter fee was established.
Okay.
I believe that was depreciated fifteen years, correct? What was that?
Depreciate, the meter fee is depreciating out the costs of that size meter to that resident over fifteen years. So in fifteen years, it would pay back that meter.
I'd, I'd like to see not go fifteen years before we're doing another rate study. I don't think that's the most responsible thing to do. So a shorter plan would be nice to see.
And, you know, realistically, um, you know, cities will generally do a rate study about every five years because then you have new projections on where the infrastructure is at, at that given point in time. And you can take a look at it for the next five or ten years. Due to the amount of improvements that are, you know, were projected for Forest Lake, we did extend this out ten years.
I'm sure it gets a little difficult at that ten-year mark.
Exactly.
You know, if our one-hundred-eighty overpass ever goes through, we can develop that business district. There's a whole nother story.
Yeah, but the scenario is also, most of the majority of the capital improvements or the bonding is in the first five years. So that's, I mean, so five years is usually, is a good time to, to reuse.
Your point is capacity might be insufficient at that point with that.
If anything past five years, I think's gonna be, I mean, you're throwing darts. So right now, to get that, that twelve, twelve, twelve and ten tenant reevaluate, to me, seems logical because we need that to A, catch up, and B, get to where we need to be.
Uh, Ryan, the bonding and, and is that just for a water treatment plant, or is that a well and a water treatment plant?
Uh, for the, as you see on your schedule, maybe in the book is easiest. So we're about a book on page six, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, where it says the new water treatment plant. That would include a new plant, well, and a smaller underground reservoir.
Okay.
And that's, that's why we then pushed out the water tower, looking at the projections from twenty-three to twenty-five. Unless we get a bunch of large, large users, right, that in theory would be our last water tower in the system.
So we'd be building the water treatment plant in twenty-twenty-one?
Starting in twenty-twenty, twenty, and, and the reason we split that is because
For bonding.
For bonding, but also for the rates, to try to keep those rates as low as we possibly can. We split that so that the bonding, you don't, you're not bonding for eight million, nine million dollars right off the top, and your rate has to jump even further that for a second year, so.
And then in twenty-twenty-two would be the new well?
At one of the treatment plants. So you would then fall more in line with the common practice of having two wells at a plant. So if you did have an issue with one of the wells, you then have the other well, or you could run two wells too. But that's, you know, one thing that's too, uh, a little not, it's a little uncommon is all our well, our treatment plants have only one well at them. So if that well goes bad, therefore then your treatment plant's down. So basically, it's easy to think of each treatment plant as one-third of our capacity because we have three treatment plants, three wells.
And, and most likely that treatment plant would be in the south end of Forest Lake, correct?
Spread out infrastructure, you know, you gotta think of two natural disasters or major use for some fast reason, consumption too, so spreading out the, that infrastructure. And, you know, we do already have some sixteen-inch line started through the headwaters development part, you know, leading to where that potentially be some good sites. So the, the network or the spider web of the pipelines are already somewhat there, they just need to be built upon.
Sure.
Go back to your wagon sack to get there, right?
Yeah, we just keep extending it when the developments have allowed to.
And now when you have two wells at a plant, uh, I'm assuming they both run then? They don't just keep one as a backup, or?
They'll both get used, but
They both get used anyway, so.
Just like your high-service pumps and everything else, you just rotate them through.
It's one of those things, the well goes down, you're not getting it back online less than a week. I mean, it's gonna take a full day to pull it at minimum, and a full day to reinstall. You have to do back D-testing, there's twenty-four hours on that, so.
And chances are, there's something broken there too, so, and it's, you're down for more than just a day.
So if we're looking at July, one well goes down, that's, that's plant, and there goes your capacity. So it's, it's a, that's redundancy, every municipality is running this.
If we lost, right now on this, I didn't wanna bring that up. If we lost, if we lost well four in the middle of July, we'd be in some pretty big trouble because water plant one and three are combined, you can't run them independently. That's part of this upgrade to one and three to separate the plants. Their, their chemical feeds in the Brian system and the high service, everything's interconnected, so you can't run plant one and plant three at the same time, you can only run either one or three. So if that plant went down, we'd basically only be down to one plant. So that's kind of where the, that's why plant two is older than one and three, but it's more dire need to get that one separated and split for capacity. So if you lost that one, you'd still be able to run two plants.
All right.
So I need a direction for what we're supposed to be doing.
Right, I was just gonna see if there's any other comments from council. I mean, we, we have, in my opinion, we have to go ahead with this. I think cost estimates are realistic. I just, I just don't wanna see, you know, twelve percent every year. I think we need to find a little better way to soften that impact a bit and to we'll monetize them, I guess, as far as, that's how we do that.
We'll take a look at all options in the next week or two and get back to you, and hopefully we'll have this for you to vote on in December, our best possible scenario.
Any other thoughts from?
I'd like to turn in the direction with proposal two, it, it provides that twelve percent upfront. That preloading is, is, you had talked about. Definitely give the direction to staff to tweak things, as they can give some options. If there's other ways to offset costs, always look for that. But also, uh, look into that wagon sack, because as we've all addressed numerous times, I'd like to see that, if we need additional study done on that portion.
Well, I think we can figure that out pretty quickly.
I wanna see more on that.
I agree, I, I think it's gonna, I think comes down to what's, what do we wanna, what do we want these future conversations to be? And I would rather be explaining a ten percent fee increase or twelve percent or whatever that number is than some sort of water failure. And, um, I, I think if we, whatever we can do to take some upfront hit and have a one-time conversation about what are we playing catch-up on also might be easier than a long duration of big increase. Or high, what's gonna be perceived to be high-rate increases year after year after year.
Oh, Ryan. Do many communities, or are you aware of many communities that, you know, receive any type of grants or funding? Anything to, uh, deal with this type of thing? Or should we be also looking at, you know, our state representatives to get some type of funding from there as well, or?
Seth could certainly answer the question on the funding, as he deals with this all the time. But, you know, every city's in this kind of situation, right? So, hey, you can make a pitch to legislation, and that didn't do so well with us with the sanitary sewer stuff either, so.
I mean, save for ours the schools, we've got hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for that, which is a great thing, but, you know.
Federal, federal level, there was some recent bill passed, still in the preliminary stages of it all of how that money would be dispersed. We got staff grant, people following that, tracking that. But does it come in the, in the magnitude of PFA funding? Where you gotta go through a facilities plan and qualify, then it's basically a low-interest grant or, or loan. And we've been able to probably get better bond rate, uh,
Interest.
Interest rate than what that loan would, and the things that come with it too. You know, all the paperwork and the reporting and the monitoring and all that. But then there's also the question, does that bill that's, you know, I just talked about, does that come in the form of a grant too? So obviously got our eyes on that, it's waiting for any development. If, you know, anytime any money came eligible in the grant form, I always bring that forward. So we have that staff watching that stuff. Yeah, do I wish there was more money for infrastructure on sewer and water? Yeah, because we're putting all this money, all these, you can get any grant out there you want for trails and sometimes roadways, you know, but not for water, right? So.
Well, I think, or I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
At least to the tune of the consumer, um, if, if the rate increases in something like, they do have control over how much water they use. So there is some flexibility on their end to save their own cost.
But they, but they do pay on a minimum amount regardless.
They do, and, and that's their
Yeah, yeah, that's the issue too, I mean, this is projected out ten years. I think you're gonna see some changes being needed in five years. I mean, it's, it's good to have some kind of a, a look at this out ten years, but things can really change drastically in five years. And I, doesn't really matter what scenario you pick, it's, I think, I think you're gonna be looking at that situation. But we gotta, we gotta, we gotta do the maintenance, that's all there is to it.
One thing that we know, I mean, the new growth brings irrigation. People that build new houses, they're, they have irrigation systems put in. You compare them to the old neighborhood over here in the tree canopy, you hardly see a sprinkler going on in their yards, you're just as green as people that water every day.
Yep.
And in, until, you know, that stuff that we've also even talked about too, like, should we be more stricter on, um, building code or requirements part of a new house construction? Should they be planting more trees to provide tree canopy faster? Should we provide, require six to eight inches of topsoil on a lot instead of a developer doing basically what he wants? Puts two inches down, and they need to water that every day if they're in poor sandy soils or stuff like that because it's just gonna dry up so fast.
You're lucky to get too much of sometimes.
Yeah, you can, I mean, some houses I've lived in, I could tell you exactly where the topsoil stopped because if I didn't water, but I could tell what turned brown fastest. You know, all the stuff around the house is nice and green, everything else is brown. You know, that's the stuff that happens out in the development world. Do we require thickness on that, more trees? You know, we did relax our tree preservation, was that the right thing to do? Maybe, you know, to some degree, but, but having that old canopy in there certainly reduces the amount people irrigate because it's really a contest in the new neighborhood, who's gonna have the, not have the worst lawn. And we see that all over down there. Should we not only, we require moisture sensors, you know, put on the rain garders, but what if it rained all night? Well, as soon as irrigation pops on at six in the morning, they're irrigating again. And half their stuff, when they're not home and irrigates, they don't have it adjusted, and it's out in the road, hitting the road because we don't have any enforcement.
It's running down to storms or
We have people irrigating every day instead of the odd-even days. Again, no enforcement. So, you know, that's other things that you could do, control, to control that spike that we deal with in the summer. Uh, we've done water efficiency grant programs that have been out there, to the toilet rebates and the washing machines. You know, we're wait, that did not get funded again, but if it did, we would've went after it. We've tried and pushed in applications on redevelopments, on, on water reuse. We've been successful with the school district, the watershed district's doing some other stuff too. So, you know, there's all the avenues we're trying to pursue outside of just our own, uh, control. But it, it's come to a point that people just, they, they waste water. And we've talked about that a number of times, it's pure negligence on wasteful water use. Rains all night, they irrigate all day, every day. That's where it takes everybody in the room to talk to your neighbors, and we've had that conversation too, so.
I think rain sensors are requiring them in the future is
Well, they should be moisture sensors in the ground, in the ground. That's what Toro's doing a lot with some properties nowadays.
New construction permits?
I think they're just a sensor.
So I guess, uh, you know, backing up to where we're at with the rate study and, you know, looking at twelve million, but, you know, really say eight million for new treatment plant wells that we're talking about. You know, a vast majority of that is going for new growth in the city. And so, yeah, maybe it is time to look at adding a water charge, a whack fee of X amount of dollars to
So some of the other fees that, you know, we talked about, I saw specifically in their charts that were on top of everything that we've talked about. They had a per-unit water tower charge.
Yeah.
Water treatment charge per unit. So each house that had this was another thousand dollars that they had within the building permit. They go directly towards
I think that would be a little fairer than putting the burden on everybody that has been in the system and seeing that twelve percent every year. But, you know, we're definitely gonna have to do this, and that water fund is gonna have to fund itself. But I, again, I just, I don't see that twelve percent every year. I, I'd rather see it, you know, pulled out in different ways. And like I said before, even if that means that we're going negative for a couple of years on it, um, till we get those fees coming in, I think that's a little bit more responsible to the people that are using our water system.
Additional acts, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering if, you know, are we hurting ourselves with some of our planning where developments come in in there on wells? We talked about the one that was done by the golf course, that would have all been wells. I mean, is it somewhere along the line, don't you have to reach a point where this development has to have city water?
Uh, yeah.
My understanding is the whack, the whack fees, when the developer comes in, are what's gonna get you connected out of those developments. So adding a water tower fee and those other fees in your, your, um, new additions and the building permits and, and the beauties and stuff like that, that's what's gonna get that infrastructure out there for those additional things. But when we're looking at the budget here, just taking care of what we got, this is the cost to take care of what we got.
And you have a mechanism to not add new fees if you're willing to increase your water area charge. So in a new subdivision, they get charged an area charge. And then they also, at the time of building permit, they get charged their wax. So you could increase that area charge, that's trunk line extension, you know, new treatment, stuff like that, to a amount that would cover that new development area. You know, you could just look at the zoning map, know what your density is, and figure it backwards. You would, you already kind of got the areas, we can minus the wetlands and all that. So, you know, that's something you could just, you already have the mechanism. You just, are you willing to go to that level that these communities do over here, you know, and that stuff? And then you're always gonna then have to stay strong with your fees because you're gonna get negotiated with every developer, because they do that in every city, and it's just what they do. Because if they can reduce something a little lower, then it's just more profit towards them and their project, right? But you can certainly put those comparisons together, and you'd be amazed what some communities do charge.
I think these are two separate items, we shouldn't be clouding it together. We have our existing system, what we need to do, maintain it and get it to where it needs to be. And then we have where we wanna expand to.
But the thing is, if you're looking to get it to where it needs to be, and you don't have a plan for what's going to be on water in the future, then you're not ever gonna get to where you need to be.
But at some point in time, nobody knows when, right now, we will be built out. Your whack and your area charges will be gone. You will be one hundred percent relying on water rates.
We don't have the funds to run water out to those, those additions that are getting put in the neighborhoods. And that's the wax, your, your filter permit fees and everything are gonna utilize. But, um, you know, Mayor, you had mentioned using some of those to offset that, that twelve percent increase. If we use that to offset, we're not gonna be any better in trying to get out those developments.
I wasn't, I wasn't really talking about using that to offset them, I was talking more about having a base charge. You know, if you have a hundred-unit apartment building, it's, you know, a thousand dollars a quarter plus your water usage. If you have a house, it's gonna be ten dollars a quarter plus. That way, you're getting a separate revenue stream than just the water usage, but you're more equalizing it out.
We have that.
I'm just looking at the, like, quantity of high-density housing we have with all the apartments and everything. And if they're on one meter, you know, they're not using eleven thousand gallons each. We had to cost just as much to service those, basically. That's, I'm just trying to look at it that we can't keep raising the rates. I mean, we're gonna have to, but there's easier ways to compensate for that without just sitting there that one thing that we have to keep raising the per-gallon rate.
That's the base, the base fee is, and if you wanted to take more of a raise on your base fee and less on your per-gallon, I could see that. But if you really wanna discourage people from watering, that per-gallon increase is what's gonna do that behavior change. You know, that's spring, sprinkling around all July, and they get that bill, and they may think August doesn't need to be so green.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's both ways to look at it, I don't think there's a right or a wrong way. I'm just trying to come up with options so we don't have to do a twelve percent a year for perpetuity type of increase.
So we'll look at this again, see what kind of options there are and bring it back so that you can try to get this done, uh, by the end of the year. So at the next meeting, hopefully we'll have some more information for you.
Before, uh, before we move on, I guess I just wanna make sure we're all kind of in agreement that, um, the investment parts on here, the capital improvement portion of it. I think we, I, at least I agree, we need the new plants, we need to rehab the old plants, we need the new water meters. I, I don't think we can really cut back much on any of that. I mean, those are, those are what we're here to take care of, our waters, our sewer, and our street. And, go ahead.
No, I, I totally concur with what you're saying, that we need to, I don't have a problem with what we need to rehab. I think we, but we need to develop a plan to get more users.
More users and, and just, you know, a little bit different More users and, and just, you know, a little bit different way to build that out and, and to pay that investment back, to pay those bonds back rather than just that 12% increase.
I mean, if you don't get more user, or a lot of, a lot of new users, this 12% is going to fall on the same people, the same people, the same people.
See, the, the water usage hopefully will go down per user. And that's where, you know, whether we're billing them more or not, hopefully people will be conserving more water. And that's where I'm trying to say is we have to, you know, either get a fixed base fee-
Then I would like to see-
Or something-
I'd rather use, increase the tiers, the more you use, the more you pay.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
You're, you're saying there's some excess conservatism built into the model because of some of those things are going to happen, which I guess isn't necessarily a bad thing for our model.
That's where that five-year reevaluation point is going to be important. You know, maybe we get in real good shape in five years and you'll see those, those drop back down to the, keeping up with inflation and that's it.
I just don't want to operate like the Met Council where every year it's 10%, 15%, just boom, 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 for the next, forever. In fact, that's the way they present it to you, there is no end in sight.
Well, and we don't even have an option with them. It's, here's what we're going to charge you and that's it, so, all right.
To be somewhat fair to the Met Council, they're kind of in the same boat we were in. I mean, they let all their infrastructure go and now they finally said, okay, we have to redo our, our infrastructure and this is what it's going to cost. They just have an easier way of saying this is what's going to happen. But, I mean, they, they kicked the can down the road with a lot of their infrastructure too. It's just, to Ryan's exact point, it's, we're not the only one in this state or country that are in the same predicament. I mean, this is pretty, pretty common, it's just finding the best way to keep operating and making good water.
I think the dollars and cents are there. I mean, the, the truth is there and especially with this rehab stuff on these wells and, and the, the water treatment plants and you got to pay for it somehow, that's all there is to it. Not, nobody wants to raise that fee anymore than I do, but sometimes you got to do what you got to do it or it's just going to end up costing more money in the long run.
Yeah, there's no cheaper time than now.
Same thing with paving roads, there's no, it never gets cheaper, never.
It never gets done. All right, any other caution comments or we'll move on? All right, the 2019 meeting calendar.
I don't think I make any of those.
I think, I think I'll abstain because it really doesn't affect me.
I was thinking we'd maybe set it for three meetings a week.
A lot of Fridays in there would be great.
No changes relative to this year?
I'm serious, I mean, Myra and Sam should have the most input here.
Oh, for sure.
I, so I always look at where there's potential for quorum challenges and typically that's fallen around major holiday times. March, we've typically canceled the meeting, that is the week of Forest Lake's spring break. And sometimes that's been a week when, the first week in March, when we haven't had a meeting anyway. But this year, it's a little messed up in that, I only say messed up because it's required a lot of change of plans. March 25th is Forest Lake's spring break this year? I made it not here, so. So I'm wondering if there's any appetite to bump everything up a week in March. We would meet the week of the 4th. Workshop the week of the 11th and then meet the week of the 18th and just avoid spring break. Helps staff, helps council.
It's fine with me.
Or just cancel the 25th too.
Or cancel the 25th. I was looking at that, but that means we go from the 11th of March until April.
We do a combined meeting on the 18th?
Yeah, we could do that. I'm open to that too, if that's what staff prefers.
We prefer less meetings, but a schedule we stick to just because then working with contractors and counts payable, we can get stuff in the time we all know. And if the schedule stays current, then nobody has a hiccup.
You don't want to drive?
That was my only, Sam, I don't know if you have anything else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very flexible when it comes to that. I mean, we, the air tool or the others is going to make any difference.
All right, sounds good.
I do, I do have, speaking of schedule, I do have a question. I thought I saw somewhere that the December meeting is actually, I don't have it in front of me, is actually just, for this year is December?
Was, was scheduled for the 3rd and the 10th. And, which basically would mean you'd have next Monday, the following Monday and the following Monday after that. So I talked to Hannah, the budget adoption schedule, it was announced for the 10th.
That's what went out on the tax statements? Okay.
So I read the recommendation would be to cancel the meeting on the 3rd because otherwise we'd have the agenda, you're not going to have that many items at this point for the meeting. So the recommendation would be to cancel the 3rd and just get everything taken care of on the 10th. And if you need a subsequent meeting, you can do one on the 17th, but.
I just wanted to make sure that we were aligned on what the budget meeting was with what went out on the statement. So, okay, that, that works.
All right. Anything else to bring forward on the workshop?
No.
Work for more, or go ahead?
I have a question for fire department, everybody can't reply. I'm sorry, I'll have to get ahold of you later.
Fire board meeting?
No, it was something, darts, something was coming along. We talked about waters. Is that getting delivered first of the year?
No, they haven't selected anything yet, still in the committee?
That's still in committee for design. They're actually meeting tonight on it.
I'll look for a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else to bring forward.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.